This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, all right, recording's going and with that I will welcome everyone and it's Monday and this is November 2nd and this is our usual work session time but we're having it be as a regular session because we have Veterans Day holiday that lands on a Wednesday this year. I'll call the meeting to...
Mayor.
You checked out, Mayor.
She had a deep freeze. The lights are on but nobody's home.
We're done. Oh yeah, she just froze.
Well, she called the meeting to order, next is business from the public, there isn't any, so next is second reading of the ordinance. How about roll call?
I think, Councilor, I think she's back, the mayor's back.
I have kinda...
There it is, okay.
There it is.
Now, this happened last time, that once the recording started somehow I lose my audio. Okay, did Allison go ahead and do roll call?
No.
Nope, okay, sorry, that is so strange. Okay, Allison, I was wondering why you weren't responding to me.
Rich Kellum.
Here.
Bill Coburn.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Dick Olson.
Here.
Mike Sykes.
I'm here.
Okay, all right, folks. Next is business from the public, there wasn't anybody that had submitted earlier that they wanted to speak under business from the public, but is there anyone that has come online that would, that had planned to or would like to? Okay, not seen anybody. All right. Okay, next council, there is a second reading of ordinance, this was from last week's council, we did the first read, and so that was held over to this meeting and would you like, Sean, would you like to read the second reading? This is on page three.
Okay, an ordinance, amending ordinance number 4836, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan by amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan text and adopting findings.
A move for adoption of the...
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried and that's five to one. All right. And next is the CDBG CARES Act programs and Anne, you've got a presentation for us. And is Anne on?
Yes, I am on. I, we don't have a presentation, but you may remember back in September, there were a few questions related to the emergency housing programs that Community Services Consortium is managing with a couple of sources of funds, including the city's CDBG CARES Act money. And there were also some questions, or you may have questions about the business grant programs that Community Lending Works is overseeing. So today, we invited Community Services Consortium here and I want to introduce Peggy McGuire, she is the acting director, and Dina Eldridge, who is the Housing Services Manager, they are going to just give you a brief overview of the emergency housing programs that they are administering for three county area and how it's doing in Albany and they are here to answer any questions you may have, as am I. With that, I'll turn it over to Peggy.
Hey, friends, I'm gonna just start by saying that Dina has forgotten more than I have ever known about any of our housing programs, so she is truly the expert here. Community Services Consortium, as you may know, is the community action agency that is state and federally designated to serve Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln Counties. And we receive some funds that are directly assigned and earmarked for community action agencies and then we are also recipients of a variety of different funds. So, as you know, with Albany, we have some mortgage assistance funds and then we have some funds that we receive through the State of Oregon, through Oregon Housing and Community Services for CARES funds, for rental assistance. And we have about 100 people who've received some rental assistance funds in the City of Albany. The average payment is around $5,000. So what that looks like is that we have folks who contact us and say, hey, I owe my landlord a bunch of money and here's some information that shows you how I was impacted by COVID, how my, how I qualify for your program, and this is my landlord and this is their information. And so the average payment's been around $5,000 to each landlord. So that's, you know, a great amount of money that's going back into our community through the federal CARES funds. But I'm gonna allow, I'm gonna offer for Dina to talk about any information that she would like to share related to the mortgage payment assistance program, related to COVID CARES, and to be able to answer any questions and I'll be happy to jump in and answer questions as well.
Thank you Peggy, and I'm Dina, I'm the Housing Services Manager for CSC. And Peggy and Anne both mentioned the CDBG funds that we received from the City of Corvallis. And when we got those funds, we already knew that we were going to be getting significant funding from the state and the federal CARES Act for rental assistance. The original idea for the CDBG funding was to help people in Albany with their rent, particularly those who are COVID affected. But when these other funding streams came in, we kind of decided, you know, in collaboration with Anne, that maybe we should try helping people who were homeowners, because at the time, there was no funding at all available for homeowners. So with our CARES funding, there's really almost, you know, the limit on how much someone can get for back rent, as well as we were paying people's future rent. It could go well over the $3,000 cap that we had imposed on the CDBG funds. And CDBG regulations, because it falls under emergency assistance, it also limits us to only paying three months' worth of assistance to someone. If you pay three months, then the funding becomes a different category and rent and housing, as I understand it, Anne can probably explain it better, is no longer an eligible activity. So considering our restraint there, that's why we've been directing all of our renters from Albany, Lynn County, Benton, Lincoln, to our COVID CARES funding. And we've been trying to serve mortgage holders with the Albany CDBG. It's been a little slow, we haven't had a whole lot of people calling. We've put it on our social media, I know Anne put it on City of Albany's social media. I will say we're probably victims of our own advertising. We've haven't had mortgage assistance through CSC in many years, so I think people have gotten out of the idea that we ever do that sort of thing. So we have tried to get the word out in a limited way. We have managed to complete just one application and our big problem is because of the laws with our finances, the only way, we always pay these assistance funds directly to a vendor like the landlord. We don't give the money to the homeowner or the renter themselves, our funders don't allow that, so we have to pay the third party person. So we pay landlords and when we're able to pay a utility payment, we pay the utility company. So in order for our finance department to pay a landlord, we have to get a W-9 tax form from that landlord. And so landlords are used to that when they come to CSC and if they've worked with us before. We have a little bit of problem with it with newer landlords, but for the most part, you know, we get participation there. But now that we're talking about mortgage servicers, banks, people who own these mortgages that people are trying to get assistance for, they're not used to having to provide this information and they're usually big corporations and conglomerates. And our big problem has been trying to get anyone at a mortgage servicing company or a bank to send us that W-9. So we've got three more homeowners who are still waiting, trying to get through to their lender to get those forms done so we can pay them. We would be at $12,000 spent right now if those came in today, but that's really what we're being held to. And it's really fighting against us. And I know there was a question from the last session where someone, this was discussed back in September, when people were getting the extra unemployment benefits that was specifically COVID-related, we did not count that as income, but basic unemployment benefits that people get from the State of Oregon, we do have to count as income and that's still true today for all of our programs, including the CDBG. So it's been a struggle with the homeowners, but we are still trying and we still feel that, you know, our CARES money has a very solid and very short timeframe. We absolutely cannot spend CARES rental assistance money past December 30th of this year unless there's an act of Congress literally to extend it. So our feeling is, once that has ended, then we could certainly start pivoting towards helping Albany renters again with the CDBG, assuming we have that funding available. And you know, in January, especially if the mortgage moratorium input, put on or extended by the governor goes away again, then there'll probably be a lot of people still in need of rental assistance. But we're just, we're, it's a great resource to have, we're just bewildered that we can't get more people to process on this, but really, we're just being hampered. And frankly, from the years when we had mortgage payment assistance, I have heard anecdotally that this was always an issue with mortgage servicers. So we're doing our best on that. I will just say about the CARES rent assistance, in case, we keep statistics on what type of COVID impact they had. 98% of them had an impact in the form of a job loss. And of those 98%, 60% were from affected because of business that they worked at or owned closed. And 18% of them did not stay employed due to a lack of childcare or the fact that they had to stay home to help their children who were in school, because the schools could no longer remain in person.
Dina, I think Counselor Kellum has a question for you.
Okay.
You mentioned that the extra unemployment benefits were not being counted as income. And I guess I'm wondering on what planet that isn't money? I mean, if, if what, I mean, I hope our hearts are in the right place. So let's help the people who need help, but if it's, if somebody's getting 300 extra or 1,000 extra, whatever it is, shouldn't that be counted as money they're receiving?
Well, that wasn't our choice to make, that's the federal funders that made those decisions for our other programs.
I think Counselor, Counselor Kellum, the $600 extra unemployment insurance has ended, so it's actually, all the unemployment insurance people are still getting today is counting towards that income. It was just that extra $600 that was not counting for that window that it was available.
Yeah, I understand. I guess there is men, more than a little bit of abuse of that system, where people got the money and then decided they didn't want to go back to work because they made more money with unemployment and the extra than they got when they worked. So anyway, that was my question, thank you.
And Dina, I think Mike.
Mike.
You ready?
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay, you're having trouble with the mortgage assistance on that, getting W-9. Is the homeowner or the mortgage, the person that's paying the mortgage, are they getting charged taxes as income for that money that they're using to pay the lender?
I don't understand getting charged taxes.
Well, it's considered income, isn't it?
The assistance that we're giving as income?
Right, to the mortgage holders.
No, because the income goes directly to the bank or the mortgage lender. So yes, our finance department has to file a 1099, I believe, every year, that says how much money they sent to that mortgage servicer. So that is income to the mortgage holder, but not to the homeowner.
But the homeowner is getting a monetary benefit for that, those funds. Instead of them coming, the money coming out of their pocket, it's coming out of another pocket, but it benefits them in their mortgage, correct?
Yeah.
So the question you're having with W-9s is why can't you folks issue a joint check? If you issue a joint check in the name of the homeowner and the name of the mortgage holder, you've just covered both of your bases.
Counselor Sykes, I'm not really sure about the answer to your question. We have to follow some very specific rules. And so we are obligated that anytime we issue a check, it has to be identified as to which social security number it's going to or a tax ID number. And so I'm more than happy to dig into that question a little deeper, but as far as I understand, that the entity that's receiving the income is the one that we have to get the W-9 for.
Which would be the homeowner. Technically, it's the homeowner.
No, 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 which is the entity that's receiving the check, which is the mortgage servicer.
To the benefit of the homeowner. Correct? So I'm just saying, maybe you can issue a joint check, that way you have, I think you may be able to satisfy that requirement, not wait for the lender.
Yeah, maybe it will be true. And like I said, I'm perfectly happy to pursue that. So I keep thinking about this in terms of like the landlord and the renter. So in the situation of a landlord, we have to issue it to the landlord because they're the ones who are getting the money. It's not just to the benefit of the renter, it's the landlord is receiving the funds. And so I kind of look at that the same way with the mortgage servicer, but I'm very, very happy to look into this.
It's just a thought, because it goes on all the time.
Okay, Dina, did you have more?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Uh huh. Was there more questions of Dina?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you for attending. If you have follow-up questions, feel free to send them to me and we can do our best to address those questions. And I just want to let you know that once the COVID CARES Act money that is providing the rental relief program funds, not the city's funds, when that deadline is over, we'll have a much better picture of what the housing needs are and whether there is still demand for housing and whether those funds should stay in a emergency housing assistance program or if there's, if there are other needs for those funds. So we want to ride through the end of the year, while there are systems available, we can continue to work on, trying to increase the word about these funds being available. But there's also another program that came out to help homeowners with mortgage assistance. So we just were the first ones out of the gate with that funding. So if there aren't any other questions, I thank you for attending, Dina and Peggy. And I wanted to give you a brief update about the emergency business assistance programs and grants that the Community Lending Works staff have been administering. They were invited today, but we just wanted to give you a quick update. I know Seth has been updating you periodically about the Business Oregon Funds, accepting grant awards. And right now, the last round of funding from Business Oregon has generated a lot of activity and demand. So Community Lending Works is still processing those applications. They have a really tight deadline to actually deploy the funds within a couple of weeks. So they're still working on those. They don't have specific numbers for you today on how many Albany businesses have gotten the grant funds to date, but we'll be able to give you that information in a couple of weeks. And while they are so busy processing the Business Oregon Funds that have this deadline, the Community Development Law Grant Funds the city awarded to them are there, but they're sort of on hold right now until they can get through these first rounds of grants and then not anticipating any additional money. It'll be a nice time in a few weeks to figure out what the remaining business needs are and the CDBG funds will be there to address those needs. So with that, I, that's the update that I have. And we will invite Community Lending Works back to a work session, maybe at the end of the month or in early December, so that you can get an update on what's going on with funding available for businesses. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, I don't see any, Anne. Okay. Anne, is that it? Thank you. Okay, next would be Gina, and this is for the Financial Risk Management and Investment Policies. Gina on?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counselors. As you know, every year, we bring back the Financial Risk Management and Investment Policies for Council's review and re-adoption. Normally, we present at a work session and then bring it back at the next council meeting, but tonight, we're going to ask you to adopt with the changes that are going to be discussed. I'll start with the financial policy first. There were no real changes to that policy this year. There were a few minor housekeeping edits. We still had some references to annual budgets, and so we went in and we changed those to biennial. That's really the only, the only change to that. For the risk management policy, Steve Earlings from Barker Earlings is here to present you with a report. And then if you'd like to see some of the changes in that document, really what we're doing is we changed one of our providers to, we went from Travelers to CIS. And so there are some changes in coverages and limits there, but I can let Steve discuss those too. So Steve?
Great, thank you. I'd like to share my screen so we can look at the report that was submitted. Give me a second here.
I just made you a presenter, Steve.
Okay. Share. Okay, just a second. Well, thought this was gonna be easy, but try one more thing. Well, I guess it's not gonna open up for me. I'm not sure why it's not doing it, but we'll just kind of go through, the report was sent out to you, so I'll just go through kind of what was in the packet. The main change this year had to do with the property coverage. We received the renewal quote from Travelers who spend your property carrier for the last probably eight years. And with pricing with earthquake coverage and some changes in their underwriting stance, they were cutting back our earthquake capacity to, from 50 million to 25 million, and increasing the deductible on our standard fire and vandalism coverage from $10,000 to $25,000. So we took an opportunity to go back to CIS and see what they can do through the pool program that they have. And they came in with a great program. They were able to give us 20 million of earthquake capacity, which is more than the 10 million they usually offer the other cities and counties in the program. And for significant savings, we also were able to lower the deductible down to $5,000. So we had, overall, with the changes we made by adding the property to CIS, we were able to save $84,000 totally for your insurance program for this year. So it was a significant savings and we're happy to pass that on to the city. Some of the other things we looked at, we moved the crime coverage from Travelers to CIS also. And with that move, we were no longer required to have separate bonds from the city manager or finance director. City County includes that bond into their program, so we, we just moved that coverage over to CIS at that time. We took a long look at the deductible program you're on for liability with CIS. You've been on what they call an annual aggregate deductible. It started out at 75,000 each year that you were required to pay for losses that CIS paid out, increased two years ago to 125,000. And when we took a look at that again this year, they were increasing the contribution for that deductible up by $35,000. And so we took a look at your claims cost over the year. You haven't been hit by a number of claims, you've just been hit by some severity of claims. So we, we looked at a deductible per claim and it turned out to be a better savings for the city if we went that route. So right now, we're on a $10,000 per occurrence deductible for both the tort liability and auto liability. And it actually, you know, saved money in the long run of about $20,000 over where you were before on an annual basis. So we're very happy with that move and I think that that will do well for the city for the next few years. Moving on to, again, page three showed the property, again, significant savings. We went from 341,000 last year to 259 this year, lowering the deductible from 10,000 to 5,000. Page four looks at the tort liability. You have some pending claims in the 18, 19 year that's kind of driving your loss experience. Most of those claims are reserved for legal fees, so we're not sure how those are gonna end up, but right now, they're pretty significant reserves. So that 246,000 is primarily reserves. Police Department on page five, you see that the police department is primarily where all those reserves are. There's a couple of claims pending for the police department and so about 150,000 of the 200,000 is in reserves and two claims. You've been hit with the number of sewer losses this last couple of years and you've paid out 143,000 sewer claims and 43,000 street and road losses. Auto liability, again, it's been fairly, fairly good for auto liability. You had a blip in the 17, 18 period and then in the current period, you actually have a loss where a Public Works vehicle hit three cars that were stopped in traffic. And so it hit three cars in a row that stopped a life. And so we have a total of about 59,000 pending on those three claims that were still in the process of settling. Page seven, again, if you look at the losses, Public Works has 84,000 of the auto losses placed at 67,000. Lot of physical damage. Again, this last year, the 19, 20 year, you had... Again, this last year, the 1920 year, you had a number of backups, fender benders, that totaled 40,000, almost 41,000. And the loss in the 1617 year was the street sweeper that burned up in North Albany. So that was a $50,000 loss just from one single vehicle. Look on page nine, it shows again, Public Works has totaled 80,000, so by far the most. But that includes that $50,000 loss to the street sweeper fire. So total over the last five years from 7115 to 6302020, you've averaged 22 claims a year. This last year being the lowest number at 17, and 1516 being the highest at 32. Average claim costs have been 120,000 roughly, average cost per claim of 5,325. The bottom page shows you kind of how to split up a general liability and auto liability primarily making up your losses. Workers' compensation, again, a little, some good news as far as your experience mod went down. And it will go down again next year, the year that's rolling off is the 1718 year. So that had a number of losses in it. And so that's, or the 1617 year that had 923,000 losses. And so that's gonna roll off next year. So you'll have a lower experience mod next year. Payroll has been pretty stable, pretty much increasing payroll. Total claims for 1920 was 41, down from 53 in the 1819 period. In total, time loss count also went down from 20 to 11. Time loss days were 318. Year-to-date from 71, you've had 16 workers' comp claims, two of them being time loss claims. Most of those are in reserve with only 17,708 being paid today. In the last page, if you take a look at losses, the police has, the police and fire have the most losses for the two departments, fire of 96 with almost 1.5 million in total being paid out. Police at 92 losses with 835 being paid out. So again, those two have historically been the trouble areas where you've had the most losses. That's the risk management report, any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Oh, Bessie?
Okay, yes. First of all, I want to say that I like the idea of the lower deductibles and the lower premiums. But, and good job on that. But I was wondering, with what we just covered, the workers' comp, fire 1.5 million and police 800,000. Can you give an idea of like, what, you know, nothing specific, but what kind of claims those would be?
They're primarily lifting claims. A lot of it has to do with the ambulance lifting patients. Unfortunately, we've had some backs and shoulder strains trying to lift patients into, onto the gurneys and doing that kind of stuff. We've really done a long way, most of those losses are, you know, in prior years. So when you take a look at that 1617 year of 900,000, most of the fire and police claims were in those years. Police and fire have done a great job in trying to get, you know, safety work practices and additional lists to get patients up and then onto the gurney. So we've done a lot of work trying to eliminate those losses. So I think in the, in the coming years, those losses will roll off, Council Johnson. And so you won't see those high numbers. I think we've returned the corner, and I think we're doing better. Katie, you wanna chime in?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, I think, I think we are doing a great job. And we utilize the state's EAIIP, sorry, Equipment Reimbursement Program. So we have actually purchased a number of kind of unique lifting devices to help mitigate those back, definitely those backlifting injuries. And fire does have, you know, they're, they're actually, if you, if you take off, there's a very large claim that is one of those unfortunate things that's just part of, you know, being part of the fire service. If you take off that huge claim, they're still, they're still big, but they're actually, I would say closer to even. And some of those, that'll take another year or so to come off. And we've hit max liability on that one, Steve.
Yeah, that, that one year we maxed out the, so we had to pay more than what we normally would have.
Yeah, so I, I was thinking that the, the new, the new gurneys where they are automatic and lift up rather than having them to lift up, have we gotten any more that you know of? I mean, that, you know, you kind of weigh the difference. Okay, you have the claim here, but if you got another, some more of those automatic gurneys, you know, would it be a significant difference or a help, or are we okay?
I think we have them on everything except for the, well, it's now Medic 11. That was Medic 71 out in tangent. I think they were the only one that didn't have one. But I'm not sure if they've gotten one. That was, I think, believe the only one that didn't have the automatic lift.
I think all the ones in the city are, are staffed with those lifts. So I think it's just an outlying area one that's not.
Yeah, that, that is, they are back savers. I mean, when I used them quite a few years ago, I mean, it was just so much easier on them. And anything we could do to help, you know, is a plus, so thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, is there other questions? Okay, well, thank you, Steve.
Sure.
Yep, thank you. Hey, Gina?
Thank you, Mayor. The next policy we'll be discussing is the investment policy. We have Garrett Cudehay here from GPA, our investment advisor, and he will talk to you about some of the changes they're wanting to make.
Oh. Audio. Garrett? Yeah, we can't hear you. Can you hear us? Not now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, now we can.
Challenge number one out of the way. Let me, that again, well, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me today. And thank you Gina and JC for working with us to get to this day. I am also going to try to share the screen today. Let's see if I can make this work.
Just made you a presenter.
Thank you. So what I wanted to do is briefly discuss the market, unless there's any objective objections to that, and give you just a little background as to what we're seeing. A lot has changed, as you guys can, can imagine and know yourselves. And as I do this, this is your time, so please interrupt and ask any questions along the way. And after that, we'll, we'll give a brief update about the policy highlights, changes we're recommending to both the policy and the strategy. I'm sure you're already aware, but it's been dramatic, the change in interest rates since 12 months ago is very different. In fact, every point along the treasury curve from overnight treasury rates all the way to 30 years have hit historic lows at one point or another over the spring and summer months. And what's really interesting is if you look at the graph on the right, which we don't often talk about in the media, is the United States is now one of the highest yielding developed countries on planet Earth. Greece is now challenging to have lower yields than us. I think we all remember, they almost bankrupted the Eurozone not too long ago. So it's, it's a completely different landscape globally than what we saw in 0809, which is one of the reasons we think interest rates are gonna remain lower for longer this cycle. There's just more foreign pressure and people wanting to purchase our interest rates. The Federal Reserve has obviously made the headlines and continues to, and I think they will after the election as well. A lot of people like to see the headlines and talk about them buying bonds, corporate bonds, ETFs, even high-yield bonds. That's all true and makes for good headlines. But the most interesting thing they've done, which will be the most lasting change they made for the future, is changes to their policy framework, where they are looking to be much more inclusive on employment measures, which is great. They're trying to pull in more low-income folks, people that need skills, retrainings, and make for more level playing field. There have been, there's a lot of evidence of racial or other biases in the employment data. And so they are working hard to try to be a part of fixing that. But most importantly is their inflation target. They have told us they will not raise interest rates until they have averaged 2% inflation for some time. The problem with that is they have averaged inflation of 1.61% over the past 10 years. And given the slack in the economy with the current pandemic, markets nor themselves think they'll get there anytime soon, which is also leading us to think that they are gonna be in a low-rate environment for some time. Again, given this is a global world, Europe and Japan are the other large developed economies that compare closely to the United States. And they're actually in outright deflation at this moment. They're, they're seeing price declines broadly speaking. This is just another way of saying the same thing. The Fed is telling us they're not gonna raise rates. But what's most important is what does the market say? And this is the path going forward of federal funds rate increases. And that is to say there are none for five years. And the market's like pricing in two interest rate hikes over the next 10 years. That's extremely low by historical standards. The average Fed hiking cycle used to average 13 rate hikes or about 5, 5.5%. This is not a market that's saying economic growth and inflation are gonna roar back anytime soon. This can change quickly, and I hope it does, but that's, that's the state of affairs we see today. And this goes to show why that is. The economy had only been growing at 2, 2.5% since 0809, and now we face the massive shock that we just ran into. We had the largest decline ever on a quarter for GDP in the second quarter, not surprising. We're a service-based economy, and we closed the doors on stores, restaurants, bars, concert halls, you name it. Only to be met by third quarter, the largest ever increase in GDP. Yet we still mean well below where we were coming into the year, and even more below trend. And that is extending that 2% growth, which we expected coming into the year. So a lot, a lot of work left to do, and unfortunately, the, the easy work has, has already been done. Gains going forward will be hard. And a lot of that has to do with the chart on the right. The headline unemployment rate has come down rapidly, and job growth has come back quickly. But we still have almost 11 million less people employed today in the economy than we did pre-COVID. This is tracing back to the beginning of the year. That's a lot of income taken out of the system, and that's a lot of compounding effects too, as, as you guys can imagine, with less money floating around the economy. And this is really interesting. You guys spoke about this recently, about the stimulus and the enhanced unemployment benefits that ran out July 31st. This is unprecedented. You look at the chart on the right, and of course, it makes sense that consumption, which two-thirds of the economy in America's consumption, is closely tied with personal income. It's hard for a long period of time to spend more than you make. Well, that got completely disjointed in the crisis. As you can see on the left, the federal government did something they've never done. They shoved about $3.5 trillion through the $1,200 checks, the enhanced unemployment benefits PPP loans into people's pockets. And obviously, you can't spend it if you can't go out and spend it. And that's what you see on the right is this great divergence. So the good news is there's actually still a lot of savings in the economy. The savings rate is still near all-time highs, about 14, 15%. But we run the risk absolutely running out of gas here in the fourth quarter without additional stimulus or a more meaningful reopening of the economy and cures on the vaccine. So a little bearish, understandably so, but we do see the economy continuing to move along in positive direction. Unfortunately, for interest rates and the investment earnings you guys are looking at, we do think it's gonna be a number of years before we get back to anything close to where we saw in the last couple. So with that, unless there's any questions, I'll briefly touch on the policy changes and strategy changes.
Council, do you have any questions at this point?
All right, thank you.
I don't see any, Garrett, go ahead and proceed.
Thank you. I'm just gonna touch on the, the highlights. There are a number of policy changes in the policy change memo we prepared. But I just want to bring to your attention the ones we think are the most meaningful. First and foremost, a pretty small change, but we did increase the allowable exposure to any one federal agency. This is more of a being consistent with other entities in the state and more common best practices, very small change. The second one is interesting, and we want to increase the exposure allowable to the municipal bond sector with changes in the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. The tax package late 2017, early 2018 made advanced refundings impossible or very difficult with tax-exempt debt. So we've seen a flood of taxable bonds, thank you, low interest rates, that they've made those economical to actually refund tax-exempt debt. So we do want to increase your allowable exposure. It's a very solid, stable asset class. And right now, municipals are actually paying a higher interest rate than corporates. And that has nothing to do with the long-term risk. It's more the supply-demand dynamics and the fact the Fed is not buying municipal bonds. Second or third change on this page is just lowering the commercial paper ratings requirement from A1+ which is like a AAA-like rating in corporate land, which is rare nowadays, down to A1. Again, that is consistent with statute in other municipalities in the state. Next, what we wanted to do is talk about a recommendation that we are proposing, and we've been working with Gina and JC to move forward. Is we want to recommend changing your benchmark or your investment universe that you invest into from one that's bounded by zero to three-year maturities to one that is out to zero to five-year maturities. And that has nothing to do with what's going on in the market today, per se. It has everything to do with the fact that your program is very stable. You can see your balances on the right. You have very, very stable finances, so we can make this change. Second, the additional shift out there is very minimal in terms of actual risk you're taking on. But most importantly, in that third bullet, is by doing so, you have almost doubled your, excuse me, grown your opportunity set by 52%. That makes a huge difference when you're trying to adjust for risk and return profiles and liquidity needs. And lastly, just history shows extending that duration out there and grabbing longer maturities, which you again have the ability to buy and hold to maturity, given your stable balances. That is met with higher return. So we would like to make those changes, just to make your money work more for you, be more opportunistic, while still, of course, managing risk and liquidity in a very sound way. So that's all I had today. So any questions or?
Questions, Rich?
Yes, sir. By, by pushing us into longer term, that also holds on to the money through what's going to be a very difficult time in the short term. I mean, I'm, I'm questioning the, the value of putting the money away to a place where it's harder to get a hold of it if we have a problem. Now, I'm gonna be gone in two months. That's not gonna be, not gonna be my, my worry at that point. But it seems to me that, well, I'm gonna think about that.
Yes, thank you for that question. One thing that makes us feel good about that strategy despite that is three things. First, it's generally speaking, the, the bonds, the further out you move out in the bond curve, if, if bad economic times happen and the city becomes distressed, interest rates tend to go down, much like we saw this year. Second, with the zero to five strategy, we ladder these maturities out throughout that spectrum. We're not taking wild bets in any one area to try to make a market call. So you will have, on average, 20% of your portfolio mature any given year. And lastly, we really focus hard on liquidity. As of today, a little over 80% of the money we manage is in treasury and guaranteed agency securities. These are highly liquid. We could sell your portfolio in five minutes if pushed to. So risk is certainly there, but we feel through stable balances and those dynamics, we're comfortable in making that recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you.
Okay, Gina?
Thank you. So we would like counsel to readjust our policies. And if you would, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, counsel, you've got resolutions on page 6, 32, and 58. And do you have any questions on the financial policy? Or risk management? Or the investment? Okay, if not, then. Oh, yeah, Rich? Yep.
Is there anything that says we can't do this at the next meeting?
That I don't know. Is there, Gina, are you needing these adopted now?
It was just suggested that we have them adopted now so that we weren't waiting until December to take care of this.
Yeah. To make it easier on staff, that's probably best. But Peter?
The next meeting is quite full with, and it's also, you also have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, frankly, we have two very different people running for president. And they have two very different policies. Frankly, what it looks like to me, if one of them wins is kind of a continuation of what we have. And if the other one wins is jumping into the dark. So I would like to know whether or not I'm jumping into the dark. So I would vote no against this.
Well, the only thing is, is that if there's a new president, it wouldn't be till January and things take a while to happen. So we don't want to, you know, hold up these resolutions this way so staff can be able to get this off their plate.
You're making a policy. Adopting a policy for the next year.
Yeah.
What we always do is it always takes four votes and you can change that policy if you, if you want to.
Okay, well, I've had my second.
Okay, Bessie?
Yeah, just wondering, Gina, do you need three motions or do you want to do it all in one?
I'm not sure about that piece of it.
Now, let's see if our city attorney is somewhere close.
I am. I'm trying to get my camera. Because the resolution, we can do them all at once. I mean, it won't take that long, but we only need one reading of each one. I mean, don't need a reading at all. We just need a motion for each one. So we could, we could do them individually just to save time or to be safe.
Make it clear.
Yeah, in the event that one of them, some, some counselors don't want to vote on one of them, but feel like they would on the others, we could just do them three separate. Won't take that long. Might be easier.
Okay, then I would move to adopt a resolution, A, the financial policy.
I think Dick, did you do a second? Was that a second, Dick? Oh, okay. Bill did, okay. Motion's been made in a second. Any discussion on the financial policy? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Unmuted.
Okay, all right, motion carried.
Motion carried.
And next is a risk.
Next is a risk.
On page two. We're getting some feedback.
Adoption of the resolution, B, risk management policy.
Second.
Okay, any dis-
Any dis-
All those in favor, say aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Same sign.
Okay, motion carried.
Motion carried.
And the next one, investment policy.
I'd move to, oh, I'm sorry. Someone's asking something.
Yeah, I was going to ask a question on resolution A. Is there any way we can go back and and have a roll call, roll call on that, on that measure, please?
On the first one?
Yes.
Or was there a no then?
Yes.
Oh, there was. All right, Ellison, can we get a roll call then on, on A? I thought it was, I thought it was unanimous.
No.
Okay. Dick Olson?
Yes.
Mike Sykes?
Mike Sykes.
No, no.
Bessie Johnson?
Yes.
Rich Kellum?
No.
Alex Johnson II?
Yes.
Bill Coburn?
Yes.
Hey, that's four to two.
Okay. Sorry about that. I'm getting an echo. And I don't know if anybody else was, but it's repeating everybody's what they're saying, so. Okay.
For some reason, we've seen this coming from Councilor Olson, so we've been muting every time that. But he can unmute himself when he's speaking then.
Okay.
You know what they say, vote and vote often.
I mute most of the time and I just turn it on when it looks like you want to hear from me. Somebody is muting me automatically.
So on item B for the risk management, I had that down as unanimous. Was there any no's?
No.
Okay, now we have investment policy on resolution page 58.
I'd move for the adoption of the resolution. Looks like it's A on our, it's investment policy anyway. Could be C.
Could be C.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
One second.
Okay. Any discuss-
Any discuss-
All right, all those in favor?
All those in favor, say.
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye. It's 12.
I just heard one, one opposed. Was that Rich?
That was Rich.
Okay, all right, motion carried. Okay, we did that. And thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
Uh huh. And next is the Traffic Safety Commission recommendations. Ron Irish, is he on? Yep, here comes some apps.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. It's, it's not often that you receive a recommendation from the commission regarding stop sign control. So I thought I'd start with just an explanation of why we're, why it's even coming to you. Most decisions regarding traffic control, as it turns out, aren't made by council. So you're heavily involved, for instance, when to construct something, like when a traffic signal goes in. The municipal code says anytime there's a change in on-street parking regulations, that happens via council resolution. Everything else in regard to how the system operates, traffic control, striping, stop, intersection control, the municipal code assigns that responsibility to the city manager. So it's essentially a staff-level decision. We at staff tend to take those issues, particularly when they come from the neighborhood, and route those questions past the Traffic Safety Commission for their recommendation. So that provides neighborhoods with a forum where they can, they can provide information about what their concern is in detail and gives them a process to have their issue looked at. And that has worked pretty well in the past. This particular one, though, did not come from a neighborhood bringing the issue forward. This Traffic Safety Commission discussing a different intersection at a previous meeting of theirs wanted to take a look at this one. Now, they were earlier looking at the intersection of 9th and Broadway. And one of the commissioners asked why that intersection wasn't always stopped and the intersection of 12th and Elm wasn't. So at their next meeting, we had a staff presentation of the commission that kind of described why the intersection at 12th and Elm was a two-way stop and not a four-way stop. And it all went back to the manual and uniform traffic control devices. Probably heard us talk about the MUTCD in the past. So usually when we're talking about it, we're talking about traffic signal warrants, where you have to meet a certain number of warrants to justify a signal. Well, it turns out that there are also warrants for all-way stops. And those warrants involve things like the number of vehicles that enter the intersection from both approaches. It has to be a certain level. The intersection at 12th and Elm has sufficient volume on Elm but not on 12th. A different warrant was the number of reported crashes that happened at the intersection. If more than five crashes happen per year of a type that could be corrected by an all-way stop, that also would satisfy warrants for installation of an all-way stop. There are also some suggested situations where the MUTCD wouldn't say you absolutely have to put an all-way stop in, but they say you should consider it. And those would involve situations where you have very high pedestrian movements, crossing movements, where you have sight distance issues, or vehicles on one of the approaches have a very difficult time seeing approaching vehicles on the thru road. And at the intersection of two arterial or collector streets. And so of all of those situations, that earlier intersection at 9th and Broadway, it really only satisfied that last one, the intersection of two arterial and collector streets. In the case of Elm Avenue or Elm and Broadway, none of those warrants were met. So the volumes on 12th are too low. The crash rate over the past 10 years, we've had seven crashes in that 10-year window. So we're averaging about, you know, less than one crash a year. We're averaging about two crashes every three years. There are no sight distance issues there. We don't have a heavy concentration of ped movements. We are posted at the intersection, the two crosswalks that cross Elm are posted as school crossings. So if you go back from the intersection a few hundred feet in either direction, you will see reduced speed zone signs there. So they say a speed limit 20 when children present. So there is a school crossing there, but not a high volume of pedestrians. So when the Traffic Safety Commission received that report, they were still favorably inclined to recommend installation of an all-way stop. And their thinking was that the MUTCD, while it had warrants for all-way stops, that they were developed a long time ago and the warrants tend to be kind of auto-centric. So they're favoring automobiles over some of the other types of users that use the street. So they were inclined to recommend approval of an all-way stop. The staff suggesting at that meeting was rather than the commission go ahead and do that, because they were making a recommendation that didn't comply with the MUTCD, that that might be a situation they were better off referring the issue to the city council. And so that's kind of why, why it's here before you, instead of either being a strictly a commission decision or a staff-level decision. The staff or my perspective on whether an all-way stop is better or worse than a a two-way stop, a little bit different than the Traffic Safety Commission's. I think my, my, my initial concern is basically the crash rate. It's fairly low right now. As we mentioned, it's about two crashes every three years. If we looked at the intersection just to the north, a couple of intersections north, where there's an all-way stop at 9th and Elm, we would see a very similar crash pattern, also similar volumes. But that's an all-way stop at 9th and Elm, and it has, once again, about seven crashes in that 10-year window. One of those was ped-oriented. So the most dangerous time when you switch out an intersection to change it from two to all-way stop is that first month or two. And we've experienced this at multiple different intersections in the past where we've made a change, where the public's not used to it. And it's not uncommon that the intersection at Hill and 24th comes to mind. We converted that to an all-way stop probably 12 or 15 years ago. And that first two months after we did it, we had a very low compliance rate on Hill Street. The drivers on Hill continued to run the stop. They didn't recognize the change. We had flags over the stop signs. We had traffic control change-ahead signs posted. We put rumble strips out on the pavement. And for two months, you know, we just watched people run that stop sign. And in that two-month period, we had about six crashes, which was, you know, three or four times historic annual crash rate there. So one of the things that could happen here if you switch it is you could see an increase in that short-term crash rate. It's also somewhat questionable about, once you got past that period, whether you would actually see a drop. You know, and I based that on the crash rate at the intersection, the all-way intersection to the north at 9th, where the crash rate is very similar today with an all-way stop up there and similar volumes to what we see at 12th. In addition, if we were to convert 12th to an all-way stop, we would then also have to go back and remove the reduced speed school zones. You can't have those for a school crossing at an all-way controlled stop. So the staff position was slightly different than the Traffic Safety Commission, which was another reason why we thought this would be a good one to take to council and let council look at it and make a decision about, you know, whether they wanted to follow Traffic Safety Commission recommendation or look at something else. And so with that, I'll stop and take questions.
Okay, questions? Bessie?
Yep. Ron, is, how far is 12th from Queen?
In terms of feet, I don't know. It's about
I mean, actually like-
It's about a six-block stretch.
A six-block, okay. Cause I want, I couldn't quite picture it. And I thought, cause if it's too close to Queen, that wouldn't make any sense. And then 9th says three blocks from the four-way on 9th, and then six blocks from the other. Okay, thank you.
So Ron, did, maybe I missed it, did you get much input from the school district on it? Or did you? Go ahead.
There's been no public, no public input on this one. So it wasn't a request generated by the neighborhood or the school district. It was, the whole issue came up when a member of the commission questioned why, why this intersection was a two-way stop when that other intersection that they were looking at, based on the neighborhood request, was an all-way stop. There's been no, no public involvement to this point.
Okay. All right, Rich, and then Bill?
Bluntly, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Yeah, I was leaning towards just leaving it the way it is.
Yeah, what, Bill, I couldn't hear.
Bill, I couldn't hear.
I was leaning towards leaving it the way it is.
Okay. Mike did a thumbs up. Anyone? Alec?
Alec?
So, would it, would it-
I can't hear you, Alex.
Would it wise to talk to the community, the people that live in that neighborhood, before making a change?
Right, that's what he's asking. Okay?
We have, you know, in the city initiated the change, we very often do contact the neighborhood. In this case, you know, we didn't because the request came, came up in a different way.
So counsel, do you want to direct staff to engage the neighborhood or not?
I say-
I would say no. You know?
I would go along with that. Leave it, let, leave it, let, yep, leave it alone. Yeah, I agree.
I say no.
Okay. So that looks like, Jordy, Dick, this is kind of your neck of the woods. What would you say?
Unmuted.
I think it's fine the way it is.
Okay. All right, I think that's it. Do you agree, Alex?
I agree with that.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
I think you got some direction, Ron. Anything else?
I, I think that's enough. If, if you're not interested in making a change, taking no action- I, I, I think that's enough. If, uh, if you're not interested in making a change, taking no action gets us there.
All right, okay. All right, and is that it this evening?
That's it.
Ron? Okay, thank you. Next is business from the council, and, um, Rich, you're up on the top of the screen.
Yeah, I've asked, going back last year, um, I questioned the policy of the library to allow people who were political to meet there. And then the, when that happened, excuse me, uh, the library board changed the policy so people who were good then, um, meet at the library. Of course, what that left was, um, they were not charging for anything. I've asked, uh, when they're going to come and, uh, they seem like they keep postponing their meeting. Um, I mean, there are several people who are concerned. And in the past, this was discriminatory against anyone who was not a Democrat. Uh, Democrats got to meet there for free. That's thousands and thousands of tax dollars over number of years. Um, being used or not collected, as the case may be, uh, for one political party, when everyone else was told by the policy, you can't meet there. So, what I'm asking is that this happened in a timely manner. Um, so we nip this thing before I go off the board.
Okay, Peter?
Yes, on the 16th, Eric Iconoid, uh, library director, will come to you with a recommendation. Uh, it has been through the last library board meeting. They've talked about it, uh, for the last two meetings. And, uh, he'll, he'll bring you their, uh, their staff, their, their recommendation as long, as well as his. They're not unanimous, but, uh, you'll hear about it on the 16th.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, Bessie?
No, I got my question answered. Thank you.
Uh huh, okay, Mike?
Yep, a while back, we had Sean write, write up a resolution supporting the Second Amendment in the City of Albany. And we tabled that because we couldn't meet in public. And it doesn't look like we're going to be able to meet in public for a long time. And I'd kind of like to get that brought back before the end of the year. Uh, the resolution or whatever it was that, uh, supported the Second Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. And I'd kind of like to see if we can't bring that back since we're not going to meet in public for a while now. That's it.
Okay. All right, Dick?
Uh, yes, uh, if the Trumpites are going to contest the resolution, the, um, uh, the vote, I'm wondering if we ought to have our own well-regulated militia. Maybe I ought to go out and buy myself a machine gun. So, um, so maybe we need to have that resolution before the end of the, uh, end of the year.
It still won't allow you to buy a machine gun, Dick.
How about 1837? That comes pretty close, doesn't it?
No, it does not.
Okay, well, no, bite them off. Uh, Dick, anything else?
Nothing else.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Bill?
Um, Bill?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, and Alex?
Um, I'm seeing a lot more lights on earlier in the day, so I really do appreciate the message getting out. Um, this is nice, but there's been some accidents around town, but I do believe there's, I do believe there's more lights being turned on sooner than later, which I think is great. So a lot of cars is vanished. And I think the, the carousel and the people that put the Halloween stuff for the children to bank that. And I appreciate the people doing that for the kids in the city.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
That's it.
Okay, all right. Yeah, it was a, um, a great turnout for Parks and Rec for the Halloween drive-through for Bryant's Park and, oh my gosh, all the amount of pictures and stuff that came through Facebook and loads of volunteers. And I heard kids came out with the whole bucket of candy going through it. And it was a little hard. It was a traffic jam all the way through town. Uh, some parents kind of left without being able to make it to get through, uh, including my little grandsons couldn't make it, but it's hard to keep an eight-month-old in a car for, car seat for an hour and, but they got lots of candy and, um, great experience. I just think it was a wonderful idea for our Parks Department to put it on and, and I'm so grateful for all the volunteers that helped out. I know Peter and Julie was there with their costumes. Um, so those were great costumes you had too, but, uh, okay, um, that's it that I had. Peter, did you have anything?
Yes, just two things. One, uh, we, we spoke to you last about, uh, the community survey that's coming up and mentioned that we have the questions for you this evening. So Jorge and I and a few others have, uh, spoken with, uh, National Community Survey today, um, and got this draft list of questions, which Jorge will send out to you. There's no need to make any kind of a decision this evening. Uh, we'd just like to have you take a look at them and provide, uh, whatever feedback, uh, you want to, to me or to Jorge. And I would ask Jorge if he has anything to, to add to that.
Yeah, no, the only comment, uh, Peter, I have is that the last survey that we conducted was in 2018. Uh, we just, uh, as Peter mentioned, a partner with, uh, National Community Surveys. And, uh, we have about between 14 and 15 questions, and among those, uh, we, we included a couple COVID-related questions. And that has also allowed us to, uh, be able to fund this through, uh, CARES Act. So there's no city, uh, funds coming for this survey. Uh, the questions also, um, are going to be measured with other communities. So there's a benchmarking, a benchmarking aspect to this. So one of the things that, uh, we cannot do is change the questions, but if you have any comments or feedbacks, uh, feedback on these questions, please let me know. I'll go ahead and send it via email, uh, uh, tonight or tomorrow morning. And I will appreciate if you can provide me with any comments or questions that you have about the survey by this Friday, because we plan to probably start, uh, moving forward with this sometime early next week.
Okay.
And Mayor, the, uh, only other thing I have is that, uh, some have expressed concerns about election day safety and security. So I've asked, uh, Marsha if she would, uh, join us this evening. She's, she's on here and she's, uh, ready to provide you a, a short update.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Uh, Peter, thanks for inviting me. Just want to give you a quick update. As you're aware, the governor issued a state of emergency that started at 5:00 PM tonight and goes through Wednesday, November 4th until 5:00 PM, mostly centered around potential of, uh, election-related violence in the Portland area. Uh, I did have a conversation with the Supervisory Special Agent out of the Eugene office of the FBI, who is coordinating our response, uh, and information over the past month or so. There is no actionable intelligence that any of the Mid Valley cities have any, uh, planned protests or anticipated violence. If that changes, we'll be notified immediately. Uh, with that being said, we did follow some best practice recommendations from the FBI, which was to increase security around our two ballot box locations, one in North Albany and one at the library. As well as the sheriff's office is increasing security at the courthouse with the other ballot locations. So you'll see an additional presence there tomorrow. Uh, we're fortunate in the fact that it's a, a vote-by-mail state, so we don't have a large crowd that will go to these locations. Uh, but we will be dealing with any sort of election interference that might occur there. Uh, the FBI has given us some guidance in that regard. Uh, I've had some questions about boarding, boarding of businesses and that. There's, again, there's no indication that there's any protests expected in Albany. If, if things occur, uh, then we will respond to them as any property damage or any related disturbance. Had the same conversation with Chief Hurley over at Corvallis. He is hearing and directing the same. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions?
No, thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Okay, Peter, anything else?
Nothing else, Mayor, thank you.
All right, and, um, on the list here is not the next meeting date, so it would be, um, I believe the 16th and 18th we have. Or six.
That's correct. That's correct. It's, uh, November 16th. You have a abbreviated city council work session at 4:00 PM, followed by a joint council and planning commission meeting at 5:15.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, anything else then, counsel? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.